Hello.
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 Hello, everybody.
What's going on?
Doing it, doing it, doing it. Then there was Concrete Five. So, oh, man, Katz is even awake?
Yeah, I am.
Katz, what are you doing?
Well, it's 2:30 in the morning. It's.
Go to sleep. Go to sleep, man.
Yeah, I will after this.
You have kids, man. What are you thinking?
Well, Katz is still awake.
Well, there you go.
He's still awake. That's funny.
I just woke up in the middle of the night.
All right. So we've got a bunch of stuff to get through and an hour to do it. So forge ahead. I've got an agenda. Ooh, let's see. Well, we are you going to be able to admit these people, Corbin, or do I get to click? Admit? Admit? Sure. Well, the first thing I want to do is start with some thank yous from last month. So, um, whilst I click admit, uh, first off, I want to thank A3020 and Deek for some security notifications. Uh, this stuff comes into our security email and now with Lisa around goes it starts this incredible workflow that has all these boxes and diamonds on it and things go this way and that way. So, um, a couple of issues reported, nothing, no gaping holes that anyone needs to worry about, but definitely some things we are, um, we're poking around at. So thank you for doing that. Uh, I want to thank Emlo Cotti for the documentation pull request to expose the edit button. Uh, this has been deployed, but it looks like it was done to the wrong theme or something like that. So it needs to be deployed again. But it looks like it should work. That's very nice. It is lovely to be getting, um, improvements to the interface stuff around these kind of improved tools that we built a long time ago. I remember, uh, relaunching the documentation stuff as a separate site, which was, um, you know, not without its stumbling blocks. We still need to join it to the, um, authentication providers so people can get badges and karma points. Um, so it is certainly, you know, not without challenge, but, uh, definitely nice to be getting some extra hands on helping with that kind of stuff. So thank you as always. Michele, Katz has been uploading videos from Cascadia PHP like a hero. So, um, if you like videos and who doesn't, uh, go check out YouTube and, um, Katz has access to our Concrete Five channel now. So he has been uploading stuff as us and, um, a lot of you guys are on there, uh, doing cool. This is why Concrete Five is cool things. So Katz, great. Katz is saying his show and tell is coming out as well. Uh, oh, that's our show and tell. He edited up the, um, that, that really nice show and tell. Uh, and Katz does all sorts of cool video stuff, uh, online for his, um, Concrete Five Japan crew. So well worth checking out. Uh, Stuart Black 23 and somebody named Corbin Santo helped fix some Concrete Five sites for free. So thanks for being helpful, guys. Uh, in that vein, there are a lot of people who are very helpful in Slack, including Deek, John the Fish, A3020, Stuart Black, Emlo Cotti, and oh, Kay, Kayahaga? I'm from Cleveland. C A H E U Y A. Kahuiya. Um, that list is incomplete. Uh, there's a lot of people in Slack. Slack has really taken off. We have, uh, I know there was some, geez, we're getting spread thin kind of concern when we first started using Slack and paid less attention to the forums. Uh, but Slack is a great place because you can get that immediate back and forth and it sure is a lot nicer to use in IRC. So, uh, that is cool. Andrew, I see you've got some, uh, I don't, I'm just gonna read. I can just read this stuff for you, but I know you're here. Do you wanna?
Sure. Yeah, I can call it out.
I'll drink coffee.
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, we've had a lot of activity in GitHub over the last month or so. Um, a little bit of reduced activity on our end as we've been busy with some, some internal projects, but we're trying to catch up right now. Um, we've had, uh, uh, tons of, uh, stuff with, uh, um, sorry, I've got people knocking on the door to my office. Like the one time of day when I, when it's
Stay away.
Exactly. Um, uh, yes, uh, first I want to give a big shout out to Michele again, uh, Emlo Cotti for tons of work in GitHub. Uh, too many things to list here, honestly, but some big things off the top of my head in the last month include, uh, modernizing the file manager API routes. Um, I know that getting rid of a lot of these legacy tool scripts that we want to do, um, is take, is gonna take a while and, uh, he's, he's put a lot of energy toward that over the last month or so, um, in a pull request that we're still reviewing. Um, he's done a lot of work, um, adding some SVG sanitization and improvements to the file manager uploading. Um, a big one that I know people are clamoring for is emoji support in Concrete Five and, uh, you know, you'd think that would be pretty trivial and an extension to the editor, but, uh, actually it requires a lot of under the hood changes to the way that we store data in MySQL. So, uh, he's done a lot of work in, uh, updating, uh, MySQL character sets and so forth and, uh, uh, integration of PHP CS fixer for, for coding style, uh, improvements and just, uh, and, and just a ton of stuff that I'm not even touching on. So great, great work as always this month. Um, also, uh, not to be forgotten, uh, Marv Indy, um, I'm not sure if I'm, uh, pronouncing that right, but, uh, also fantastic contributions include, uh, a lot of them centering around the file manager, which I know is much appreciated. Um, including the ability to search, uh, files based on where they're stored, which I know will be helpful to people who run big sites. Um, the ability to change file storage locations on files in bulk, which is kind of a, kind of a niche contribution, but if you need it, you're gonna be super glad that it's there. Um, and, uh, the ability to store file manager locations at a folder in the file manager, which is really cool. So, you know, you can, you know, keep your protected, you can make a folder in the file manager that binds to your protected file storage location and any file you drag in there automatically gets routed into, uh, out of the web root, um, that kind of stuff. Um, and, and a lot of other stuff as well. He's, he's been killing it in there as well. So great, great work. And also we wanted to give a big shout out to A3020 this month as well. Just, um, primarily he, he's done a lot of pull requests and, uh, some, some improvements to eventing and stuff, but even beyond that, just, um, he's been doing a lot of active reviewing of pull requests, which is really key, um, because when we are, um, when we are busy, it helps, um, the pull requests that get active reviews are definitely going to be the ones that we take a look at first, just because we know that, uh, members of our community have, have also looked at them and, and said that they're worth looking at and, uh, his feedback has been invaluable in that respect. So thank you very much to, to you and to, uh, everyone else who has contributed, uh, to, um, Concrete Five Core in the last month. It's been, it's been great.
Awesome. Yeah, I just want to touch on that, Andy, because it made me, um, think, uh, we, uh, as you guys know, uh, are going through a lot of interesting, um, learning and documentation around process with our own compliance initiatives. And part of that means that any code that we write has to be peer reviewed. So, uh, that has, um, definitely created some new workflows here in the, in the office. Um, and so having folks on, uh, GitHub with the core, uh, just throw time at looking at other code that is coming in, uh, be it from the community or even from, uh, our fearless leader, Andy, is really helpful and cannot be, um, undervalued or overvalued, whatever. We like that. So thank you, A3020, and the more of that we can get, the better. Um, let's see, going back to this agenda we put together, what else is happening since we last chatted? Uh, so I've started replying to my own forum posts in the documentation requests forum. So you may remember, uh, talked a little bit last time about making a new forum area called Documentation Requests. Uh, just to try to make an easy place to keep track of good things, handy tidbits that should be documented. Uh, I find very frequently that I'll be doing training with someone or be talking with someone and they go, oh, I had no idea that Concrete Five could do that. And I go, oh yeah, that's, that's kind of how it goes. Uh, and then we lose track of that right away. So made this forum with the idea that, well, at least we could post, hey, somebody should make a video or write a how to or something about blah, 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 uh, just so it wasn't completely lost information. And I posted a couple in there. I have not seen a lot of activity in there, but I was able to find a little bit of time to go ahead and make a video myself in there. So, uh, we'll continue to do that and we're looking at some different ways to, uh, draft in more help, uh, on our end to kind of create those, I'm thinking two-minute granular little bite-sized chunks of content. Uh, the more of that, that is out there, the better. It really has very valuable long tail marketing effects to have, you know, just a two-minute video of here's how easy it is to do bulk SEO editing in Concrete Five. Someone is going to wander into that when they're Googling bulk SEO website and it's really, uh, I'm sure Jess will confirm the, uh, the, the marketing opportunities around having many, many small pieces of content around how you do things with a CMS, uh, would be great. So, uh, don't wait for permission. Just grab your headset and start making videos and post them. Uh, we will do a better job of aggregating them. One thing that I discovered, uh, as I did that is maybe I'm missing it, but I believe our documentation site could do a better job of, um, ingesting those videos. I don't know if I'm doing it wrong, probably, but, uh, you know, all I can really do is stick a URL to a YouTube link. Uh, just like, just sticking to Lincoln, a how to, uh, and it's not, I can't figure out a way to embed the actual video. So probably a simple change for somebody to make if we're doing, uh, uh, updates to the documentation site. Um, adding a custom attribute for video URL and displaying a YouTube video in a nice form factor up top would be an easy win. It would make the doc site look prettier. Uh, in additional news, we had a weird thing that I'm wondering if anybody else has any knowledge on, um, late last week, we got, um, notification through Google Webmaster Tools that our site had, uh, what did they call it? Malware or that it was just like, it was, we were being
It was a dangerous file.
We were dangerous. Uh, and, and amazingly, like in Chrome, when you would download, uh, the latest build eight four three, it would straight up give you an alert like this contains dubious stuff. And we couldn't figure it out. I mean, we scanned it to, uh, up and down. Like there's nothing in there. Like there is a Symphony issue that, you know, is not good, but it's not a vulnerability in Concrete Five. We're not using the Symphony in a way where that vulnerability would, would damage us. And so one theory was like, Google is now like actually tracking vulnerabilities in open source frameworks and looking at whether you're using this or that and penalizing it for you, which struck us as like,
Nah, we just rebuilt the file and then we uploaded it and now there are no issues on the
Yeah. So who knows? Like, yeah, we scanned the entire file system. We found, you know, nothing much. Like there was something from a long, long time ago that had been embedded in some package that, you know, was, I don't know why Google would just decide in the middle of the week that it would, it was for the eight four three build and the seven point five point thirteen build. If you try to download that, only Google Chrome will give you a warning. And I have no idea what the hell they're doing over there. And of course it's Google, so you can't ask anybody. Uh, well, that's, that's loud. Uh, so yeah, as Andy said, we just rebuilt the file and uploaded it with a new, uh, uh, can you mute door?
Got him.
Thank you. Uh, so that was weird. So if you had a weird moment, uh, last week, I think like we took care of it, but it's hard to know because Google doesn't really give you any info and, um,
There were no trojans or anything, uh, unexpected in the, in the file. Just so in case you encountered that warning and you were thinking, um, something made its way into that zip file. That was not the case.
Yep. Super weird. Uh, so all that being said, I've got a couple more news items here, but the next one on my list is I know Wayne Stewart has been doing some, um, redesign thinking on concretefive.org, kind of putting together some, um, uh, different expectations, some, some, some goals, some expectations and kind of sketching out, well, what if it looked like this and what if it looked like that? And he had asked if he could have a few minutes to kind of show off some of his thinking on this call. Uh, so Wayne, I don't know if you're ready to do that now or not.
No, I'm ready.
Take it.
Alright, so let me do a screen share and present the entire screen. And let me know when everybody can see my screen.
We can see it.
Okay, cool. So this is, well, let me back up a little bit. Let me grab our form that's in the So, you know, we've all had, you know, we're all having pretty much issues, you know, over the years, we've been using, you know, concretefive.org for years. And I came up with this idea of redesigning, you know, concretefive.org. So I have, um, I have this file that I created, this Google Doc that I created here, and this is a project, a kind of a list of some of the stuff that I would like to, you know, I've kind of been using the site for years now. I'd like to change. I would kind of like this to be like a community thing where people actually post things up specifically on this and say, hey, this is the changes that I can kind of filter out specific ones. So as I've been doing this, I also created out some personas for the different people that we're using Concrete Five. You know, professional, you know, we have professional developers and zoom in a little bit so y'all can see a little better. Um, so, so yeah, so we have like a professional developer that is professional designer or maybe a website hobbyist. So those are type of people out and the small business owner, those are the type of people that basically use Concrete Five, other people looking for information. And if you have a current Concrete Five site, want information on it. So long story short, I created these project goals and this is kind of a design that came out of that. So this program is with Figma and Figma is a great program to use for UI design and development. Um, you can actually share this live. There's actually a live link in one of the Slack channels in our show and tell channel. It has this up and you can go, anyone can go view it. Um, I set it up so anyone can view it. And this is basically how I envisioned, um, you know, a newer version of concretefive.org. But look, I also took into account, you know, concretefive.org has been around a lot. We can't do wholesale changes. So it takes into account that these wouldn't be that huge of changes to do in terms of really just, um, changing the site. So I have this new hero image here. You know, we changed that. I tried to have a, you know, download Concrete Five, how that would specifically look. Um, we had watch, you know, watch Concrete Five in action. Uh, this would be a pop-up. So you'd be click on this specific area here. It would pop up into a video of what Concrete Five is. Um, features you need to be built right now. That kind of just goes on what's currently on the homepage right now. So we have mobile ready, developer friendly, and it would take you to different pages to learn more. Then we have, you know, is can we build the other area, um, where you can build this out. You click on contact us. Obviously you can contact, you know, the core team for, you know, different stuff. Also, we have where it says community members, says joining your community. They have stuff about community members, join our community. You know, we'd have that and obviously our footer area. Okay. I've also reimagined a little bit of how we would do the search. Um, move this a little bit. See now, a little bit. And and so our global search would look a little bit more like this. Right now the global search on Coffee Five, just on Coffee Five.org, just to give you a difference. Search is up here as we probably all know, it's kind of the smallest type of area. I thought it would be a good idea to kind of make it a little bit bigger. So make this, make this, this search a little bit bigger, just be a normal Google search. You know, at this point, that's what we're using. So I figured, you know, just keep that, we'll go to another page, but the actual search area would be bigger. And then now I was also thinking of doing a mega menu where we have community, um, member spotlight. We have add-on of the week. Now that would just be obviously not going to be my big hit face right here. Add-on of the week would actually be add-ons for someone that's, you know, specific. But we have some sort of, you know, mega menu for each one of these. And this is also the community pages. So this is the community page. How I can kind of re-manage the community page. We have search members, you know, developers needed, get started and just to really to look at the original community page. And what the goal of also this is, is if you look at all of the pages that are on concretefive.org, a lot of them are inconsistent. Like for example, we have solutions here that has no header. Um, it's kind of inconsistent and looks a lot different than the community page. So we're trying to make consistency throughout the entire site and I think that would help with, um, people who are new to the site that want to get around and get to stuff real quickly. I think, you know, kind of the reimagining, what I've kind of looked at, I think addresses some of those issues, but this is far from done. Um, but this is what community would look like. We have search members, developers needed, get started, uh, promote Concrete Five, you know, our job board. And this would be the new download page. So now we have download, moving this a little bit. You can see a little better. So this would be kind of a new download page. You'd have, you know, download eight point four three, download legacy versions. You know, install composer. This would take you to, you know, maybe a a quick, they would take you to the GitHub repo that's up there on composer or maybe show exactly how to install it with using composer. And then obviously you'd have our try our demo, um, here. And then maybe, uh, um, some other call out would be here like build, build your thing. We can build it together, you know, something like that. So this is, like I said, this is really rough. It's still kind of really in the rough, rough stages. Um, I just wanted to kind of just give, I want this to be more of a community thing. People, you know, who use it every day. And a lot of times I know with the core team, they just don't really have the time to re-sit here and re-design everything because, you know, they're busy doing client work and um, I have a small firm myself, so I'm, I'm busy doing client work too. So I completely understand trying to redesign your own stuff. But this was just me doing it at, you know, times during the night when my son, my son and wife were asleep and I just kind of re-envisioned it and this is kind of what I came up with. So please, if you're in, you're in Slack, you're on the, um, just to kind of show you, it's in the show and tell channel, you can just click on the Google Docs that's here. And that will, you know, if you want to add to that, just reach out to me. I'll let you add to that. And here's the actual link to the actual file that anyone can do. Um, so if anyone has any questions or anything else they want to know, I'd be more than glad to help out. Um, please tell me if my design sucks, hate it, love it. Um, I'm very, very open. Uh, this is not, you know, like one thing how I'm doing it. I'd just love to get some feedback from people just on it. And really just for my own, um, I have some downtime and I was like, let me just go ahead and see how I would re-envision Coffee Five.
I think this is great. I think that there's a, oh, echo. Uh, a lot of really good I think that you're right. Um, it is, you know, the, the current design of concretefive.org. Uh, when did we rethink that? That was probably back in, that was in twelve or thirteen. So it's, we are more than, uh, due for a refresh. And, um, I think that some of what you got in here is right on the money, um, in terms of just making it a little brighter, full of life, um, easier to get to the content. It, it looks like you're bringing things a little bit closer. What we have now is really airy, which is, you know, was nice at the time, but it, it kind of was almost falling apart a little bit, especially as we've, um, you know, organically, some of these pages, like you're showing solutions with the bar that doesn't go all the way across, like that stuff needs to be cleaned up. Um, I know at some point we will, um, in the new year be rethinking the design. I think we're probably going to start from the My Account area because as we mentioned last month, we are, um, building the single sign-on solution for, uh, other stuff that we have to do. Uh, and that seems like a good kind of segue in. So I think our thinking is kind of starting from My Account and touching on forums as well. So one of the things, uh, that we haven't done that we need to is set up a copy of what the German folks have provided for, um, the forums and see how that works and start to rescan that, see how that goes together. Uh, we had some good ideas last month when we were talking about badges and, um, you know, not necessarily showing every badge. If you've, if you've got like annual badges, just showing the last one and that kind of thing. Um, so I think there's a lot of kind of hands-on interface design stuff that needs to happen there. And I think that the more input we can have from the community, the more discussions that you can lead in Slack, the better. Cause, um, you know, just as you're saying, Wayne, you guys are the ones who are in there, uh, as much if not more than we are. So, uh, you are the customers. Um, I think the marketing site deserves its own solution. I, I agree that like there should be consistency in the, in the branding across everything. Uh, but I also think that our, um, you know, the experience of what's Concrete Five to somebody who is new is a different channel than how do I get to the forums? How do I answer a question for my support ticket? And so I think that, um, the more energy you guys can help us kind of corral into that explaining Concrete Five to people. Um, you know, how can we have more than just one, this is Concrete Five video on the homepage? How can we do nice tour pages? Um, every time we've redesigned Concrete Five, I feel like we've gotten better. Concrete Five.org, I feel like we've gotten better with that in terms of like doing feature pages and tours and stuff, but I think that, um, I mean, I, I, you just get so little time out of people, right? Like you get seconds for someone to be like, eh, I'm just gonna use WordPress. So that whole onboarding experience, I think really deserves to be its own beast. So
And I agree that, you know, I agree that there needs to be a difference. That's why I didn't do, um, the marketplace first, because like you're saying, I, I was agreeing with that too. It needs to be, uh, it's a different, a different branding for that than in Coffee Five.org would be. And that's why I kind of didn't touch on that. There's actually a lot more screens I've created. I've just not finished them. Uh, I just showed the ones that are kind of more thought out. Um, I think the ones, this conversation kind of already got started, um, from when we were at just Cascadia PHP. And I saw the different designs that you had and that's kind of based off of, this is kind of based off of those. So that's why I, I didn't, I wanted to tackle some of the pages. I knew they were easier, but the community and some of that stuff, I'm just gonna need, you know, reality of it is, you know, we just need all people's input. We just need, you know, I want to, you know, as I'm, I'm a UI designer and a developer by trade, but you know, there's different scenarios that a developer might see that I don't see. There are different needs that, um, a designer may see that I don't see there. So, and that's why I wanted to be kind of a community thing and just to kind of show it and you know, for the worst case scenario, even if, you know, y'all have never used anything, it'd be a great user case, you know, for our company, just to show kind of how we think out and how we think out stuff, but it'd also be great, you know, if y'all can use it. We'd be more than glad to help and be like, hey, this is how we, you know, designed it out. We can share these. Um, what's great with Figma too is it, it comes with built-in CSS. So it gives you awesome CSS recommendations on each stuff. So we can even create out an entire, um, file with all the CSS recommendations and things like that if you needed to. So.
Yeah, I think you're on the right track. I think the idea of, um, I think there's a lot of great ideas in there visually and I, I really like the idea that you guys are collaborating in Slack and, um, that conversation is absolutely as important as the end result. So thank you, Wayne. Um, alright, looking at my agenda. So we have, um, file manager update. We're not quite as far as I had hoped on that, but we are making good progress. So we have a, uh, internal doc started that outlines everything that the file manager does today. Um, we've got a new vision for it figured out on kind of whiteboard and marker, but not quite shiny enough to stick on GitHub, but I think that will be coming very shortly. Um, big takeaways are, um, as I mentioned last month, uh, looking at all the input that came from the, the survey that we put out. Uh, by far the most common piece of feedback was can we please have our paging interface back or like a decent paging interface where I can control how much stuff goes on the page? Uh, and of course you can get to that from advanced, but it is admittedly very buried. Uh, that is an easy win. Um, there's also a remarkably common, um, challenge of that modal overlay, like when you have a file block on a page and you are going to swap out an image. Unless you know Concrete Five well, it's really counterintuitive because you get the, all the controls for the file right there from just a link to the file block. And so it is very common for somebody to hit replace because you are blissfully thinking, well, I'm replacing the file. And instead what you're doing is you are swapping out a image inside of a file asset, which could have all sorts of weird ramifications around the rest of the site. Um, and so that has kind of informed a decision that we're making, uh, in this architecture that we'll stick on GitHub of moving away from having a bunch of modal overlays in the file manager and moving towards having a large detail page for all of the stuff around a file. Uh, that's the way the member section works. It's a list. And if you want to click through a member detail, you get to a detail page for a member. Uh, and it's just nice. You have like a URL for that member. You can, you can integrate through those. Like it's just nice to have a URL for the actual detail record. So in this architecture, which we will share shortly, um, there's a revised list view that is just kind of cleaned up and deals with some of the right-click stuff as well. Um, so make that a little bit more intuitive. There's kind of an expandy accordion section. So you can get to common things that you want to do at a file very quickly. Uh, even faster than you can with the modal overlays. So if you want to rescan a file or see if it's actually being used on a page, like some of the stuff that has developed often out of actually, uh, community pull requests. Um, let's bring that to the fore. So you can get to that without a lot of clicks. And then a more details button that takes you to a big page that has everything that you might want to do on a file. Um, so you don't have to peck around through these little overlay menus. So that's all coming together. It's going to be pretty cool. I would expect that to that's all coming together. It's going to be pretty cool. I would expect that to be an active GitHub thread with lots of back and forth. And maybe that can be something that we get done here shortly. And we can be talking about a summary of how it went, uh, when we meet again in January. Also on my agenda, um, stuff from last month that we've done nothing about. Came up that our, uh, documentation for, um, the, the automatically generated API docs, uh, gets a new URL every time a new build comes out, which makes linking to anything suck. And it also has a somewhat dated interface. So we had, um, talked about, uh, perhaps doing, perhaps there's a better tool to do that. We're just using a third-party tool to generate those API docs today. We had said, oh, we should see if there is one. I don't believe that anybody has figured out if there is one. Uh, that is certainly something that we would love to have direction from folks who know more than we do. It, it remains on our list, so we'll get to it eventually. But if anybody knows, oh, you should be using Farfignugger, like, let me know and we'll go check it out. Uh, similarly, search with Google deprecating their, uh, site search. We are, the entire world is kind of struggling with, well, how do I put search on my site and not pay a ridiculous amount of money? Uh, we've done stuff with elastic search on our own when we've hosted stuff in the past and it works okay. But it does definitely take a fair amount of effort to configure and keep happy. Um, so that's kind of like, I guess if we don't have a better answer, that's what we'll do. Corbin's telling me that we're checking out Algolia. Right? Algolia, A L G O L E A. Yeah, sure. So I don't know. That's a service or something. So that's a, that's a, oh yeah, we gotta do that thing that's on our list as well. I mentioned earlier that we need to set up those forums that the, uh, concrete five German folks gave us that's in GitHub. We just haven't done it. We talked a little bit last, uh, month about badges and karma and how that really needed to be, um, revisited and, uh, we were gonna, uh, set up a, a room in Slack and chat a little about that. If anybody wanted to get involved. I know Mike started poking at that, but I don't know if we got anywhere particularly meaningful. That'll be great. And then, uh, here's a meaningful, I'm going to say a meaningful promise that I can make today. If you all will help us by putting some more energy into this, telling us what additional things we should be tracking and what the point system should really be. Uh, I will put some energy on our end into making prizes more meaningful than endless free, uh, add-ons. Cause, um, like that's cool. I think that's a good part of the package. I think it's a valuable way for marketplace developers to get their packages in the hands of more people. But, uh, we could certainly be giving away, uh, anything, something, anything more else, uh, in addition to, um, you know, kind of maybe a more public, uh, statement of thanks. Maybe there could be some, some better swag or some, some devices of actual merit. So we'll start that discussion here. See what else we can, can add to the table. Uh, cause I think that's a pretty cool idea. Last big thing that I wanted to chat about today, and then I'll kind of open it up to what else is going on. We had talked last week about, uh, last month, excuse me, about, um, certification and the partner programs and, um, how partner programs were something that we needed more of and that, um, you all needed more of as well. That is kind of a, everybody wants it and we need to do a better job rethinking it. And we've put a little bit of work into rethinking it. It's still, um, pretty nascent here, but there's some meaningful things to share and, um, an actual, actual change and takeaway. So, um, I guess kind of looking back at, um, things we've done in the past, we've, um, you know, we've certainly had partner programs and certification in the past, and, um, I think some of it actually worked pretty well. And whoa, and I think that some of it, um, you know, lessons learned. So some of the lessons that we're taking from the past, just so you all kind of know where the thinking comes from. Originally with the version six certification, we went with a very granular model. So instead of saying there's, you know, level one, two, and three, we had, um, kind of task-based certification. So, uh, this person has passed the moving concrete five sites test. And this person has passed the, how does this stacks work test or whatever? That is not helpful. Like that makes it easy to, um, build the tests and that probably, it, it probably represents actual skill levels very accurately. But if you're looking at the underlying promise of look, somebody who is not a concrete five expert is trying to qualify who is. It puts an undue onus on them to actually understand if they need somebody to help move the site or set up a new site or what is a stack or a scrapbook. So it's just, that is not what the clients are looking for. We also found that automated multiple choice testing for advanced certification doesn't quite cut it. So, um, at one point we had three levels of certification, kind of last one being like heavy-duty developer. And this is all way back in version six and we, um, we had like really aggressive multiple choice tests that you could take to see if you were a kick-ass concrete five developer. And, you know, it, it just, it, it didn't do enough. I think it does on the low end, when you, when you're really testing, look, can someone use the interface? You know, do they know how to get around inside of concrete five without touching code? Sure. Uh, but when it gets into more subjective things, are they writing good code? Like it needs to be something more. And when you look at other certification programs, like if you want to get red hat certified, like you gotta go fly somewhere and sit there and they're going to look over your shoulder as they, as they test you do stuff. So, um, lesson learned, there's gotta be at the, at the high end, there's gotta be something a little bit more hands-on. Uh, another takeaway that we have from our past experience on this stuff is that individuals are not organizations. And so this actually informs some of the thinking that we're doing around rebuilding the, um, kind of the members area and single sign-on for concrete five now. We are very loosey-goosey on, um, whether you're a, a single person or a company and like you can make an account and just kind of swap out the name and the logo. And there isn't really a lot of typing to it. Uh, that is going to change moving forwards. It is, uh, fine and dandy. If you are a one-person web shop, that is great. You are absolutely part of our, um, you know, our, our user personas and, and we care about you. Definitely not saying that you need to be a huge shop for us to care. But you can't be certified as an organization, right? What happens if you, you know, had a bunch of concrete five experts and now they leave? Well, you know, your shop is no longer expert at concrete five, but you have the certification tied against your shop. So that's just kind of weird. Ongoing renewal is a thing. We kind of knew this going into it, like we, at one, one level, we did tie it to like major version numbers. And, and we kind of danced around like, oh, you've been certified for this year, but we were never very clear in the branding about it. And we never really had a lot of infrastructure for following up on it. How do I keep up to date? You know, like if you're a lawyer, you gotta go do continuing education every year. You gotta, I think it's like eight hours a year of doing whatever, some kind of classes, but that ongoing back and forth in communication between you and the group that you are certified or a partner with is important. Uh, which leads to the next point of training is central. We've certainly done training in the past. It's kind of come and gone. It was never really a big revenue generator for us. And so that made it easy for it to kind of fall off the radar as that became more and more of a concern in the past, as that is less of a concern now. It is clear that that is an important part. It is really kind of central to everything. We can't ask you to be certified. We can't ask you to be a partner. We can't tell a prospective client that, you know, the partnership means anything if we are unavailable and you're getting no training. So ongoing training is key and we're going to come to an exciting announcement about that in a moment. And last one I have here is circles of trust. So a lot of partner programs have like goofy names like gold, silver and platinum, and it doesn't mean anything. Uh, and so someone like me looks at that and goes, I don't like, what, what the hell? As I get older and see the value in that, it's kind of an aha moment. There's a lot of different clients. There's a lot of different companies and not everybody is the right match for everybody, right? Like we're all interesting individuals and, um, you know, what, what works here doesn't necessarily work there. So one of the challenges of a rich partner program is how do you connect, you know, the person who, uh, just wants to fix their broken soccer website for, with a freelancer for fifty bucks an hour to the right resource for them. Versus how do you connect a, you know, major brand that has, uh, fourteen different websites internationally and is looking to, uh, have a support agreement where they can call somebody at any hour of the night or day and, uh, get an answer that actually means something. Those are just very diverse problems. And so trying to, um, simplify a partner program. So it's all just kind of one thing is actually a mistake. And, um, you know, we had an experience many, many years ago. Uh, we were looking at becoming Salesforce partners for something else that we were doing. And, um, it was like you could, you just couldn't wrap your mind around it. It was like every time there's just like levels and levels. Oh, you can be this kind of partner. And once you're that kind of partner, you can become a three sixty partner. Once you're a three sixty partner, you can become an I-force partner and like, it's like, dude, what? And like, at, at the time it was a real turnoff for me and, um, now I kind of get it more, uh, because you need to have some ability to connect different types of clients to different types of partners. So we're still obviously committed to doing things in a sane and clear way. Uh, but I think there's some value in, um, having types of partners that match types of clients. So the thinking, uh, where, where those kind of, uh, lessons from the past take us is, uh, to some plans for the future. And let's see, what do we have here? So in terms of the certification, uh, the three levels do make sense. Although I think we kind of got the, the naming and types wrong in the past. So the base level, uh, we're tentatively, all this is very tentative, but we're tentatively calling the base level a content manager certified. So that's what kind of level one was for a while or, um, I forget what we call it. But basically you know how concrete five works, right? If there's an interface in the dashboard, you know what it's there for. You know that, you know, all little trips and tricks, you know, how to get custom templates in there. You know that the stacks are buried in the ad block interface. Like you know, you can right-click stuff in the file manager. You know, concrete five from the front-end perspective, backwards and forwards. That's the kind of thing that should be really easy for anybody to take. It should be very affordable or free. It should be, um, an online multiple choice test. We want clients to be sending their content administrators to that, like, oh, you've bought a concrete five site? Great. You should take this training. So you know, so you've got an expert on team that knows how to use it. It should be kind of like, well, if you're interested in certification, this is that outer circle of trust. Then what I think is different for us is, um, what?
You're, you're, uh, you, you went a little demon for a second there.
Am I okay?
You're okay now. Just hold your head still. Don't touch your, I don't know. You're okay. You're okay. I'll stop you if it happens again.
All right. Slack just got really weird. So, uh, I don't know how much of that you heard or didn't.
No, we heard it. We heard everything. Just one section of it was really, really loud. So.
Sorry. Next level up would be developer certified. So in the past, we tried to make a distinction between like themes and development. And I think that made sense for where web was at, at, at the point that we're talking about, which is some time ago. Now I think less so. I think with concrete five, uh, our target market is actually a little bit more complicated sites than the, um, kind of the, the prefab web builder-y Squarespace Wix Weebly world. Uh, and so the idea of certifying someone is, you know, just capable of making a theme, but not really making blocks or not doing anything in the dashboard doesn't make sense. So that next level up would be developer certified. Yes, they would know how to make themes, uh, which is, you know, obviously gotten more complicated as we have gotten more and more kind of, you know, layers of CSS compiling and whatnot. They would also know how to make a basic block. They would know how to use Express to do some, um, simple application development. Uh, this also could be an online test, um, and perhaps a bit more of a complex exam. Not entirely sure what that means, but something a little bit more hands-on. You know, they've actually had their code reviewed by a human. Uh, and then we would have a third level, which we would be advanced developer certified. And that is where you are bringing in somebody who really knows everything. They can architect a complicated site in a way that we would endorse. They know how to optimize a site that is maybe, you know, so they really understand best practices.
Happened to get, you're, you're, I don't know if you touched a wire or something.
I think it's maybe the wifi.
Oh, you're okay.
Slowly, okay.
Once every two minutes is okay.
All right. Sorry. Uh, so advanced developers know everything, right? And so that would be a not cheap, not easy, not fast to get, probably lots of personalized examination. Maybe that's some onsite training. You know, that's really kind of like the, we endorse this person to go do anything. So with those three levels of certification, I think we would have different levels of partnership as well. So we're looking at, um, we need a better name for this, but kind of like a small, medium business partner, SMB partner. That would be an individual or a smaller shop, maybe up to five people. They do design and development. They have at least one active employee who is developer certified. Uh, also have an enterprise partner. So that would be five or four full-time employees. They have somebody who is expert developer certified. And then we also are looking at infrastructure partners. And so that's, uh, much like an enterprise partner. It's a larger shop. It's got an expert on staff, but they also have a support, software as a service hosting kind of option. As we start doing more and more stuff with Alberta server and we're looking for regional partners that can, um, tell a client, look, we've got a data center here in the country that you want to be in. We would look to these infrastructure partners for that. I'm wrapping up here, so there'll be no more death metal. All of this points to the need for more training. Can't have certification or partners if we're not doing ongoing training. So what we've discussed is bringing a, um, routine training day, uh, into the week. Every Friday, um, at nine AM Pacific. Uh, we're going to have Mike Larson and Corbin lead a training session. And the, you know, the, the agenda for that will change over time. We will record those sessions and try to use that material for documentation as well. I'm not really looking to make money off of that stuff, so I will probably make it free to get it going. And, you know, look at introducing some revenue if it just becomes too busy and we want to kind of thin it out a little bit. Uh, in the past, we've seen people kind of abuse training for, you know, um, give me a, give me a demo of concrete five. So I want to be kind of thoughtful about that, but, um, I think from our perspective, this is really just, look, you have to dedicate some ongoing time to this and, um, figure out what the content is as we go. So, um, that's not going to start this Friday. We need to do a little bit of prep here, but as we get into the new year, you're going to see the training stuff come back. The training calendar will go up. We'll start doing some table of contents. Corbin and Mike will be leading this stuff. We will bring in Andy on things that, um, that, that we need to from an expert perspective. And, um, you might even see me in there sometimes, but, um, yeah, that's what you guys can look forward to. But um, yeah, that's what you guys can look forward to. Um, and that's what I know. We made it through the agenda. We're good on that. Uh, we've got about 10 minutes here before we gotta break. Uh, are there any questions?
I amazingly only have one question on the list and that's from um, John Liddyard. Are you, are you ready to uh, pose your question or would you like me to paraphrase?
Right. Uh, so it got me by surprise there. Um, it was going back to keep cleaning up the marketplace and uh, A3020 is reminding me about what I asked last month. Um, if we can make any add on that's got unanswered support tickets for more than so many weeks or more than so many, some sort of metric or number of add-ons and just automatically mark those add-ons with a big red unsupported. Knock them off the approved list, that sort of thing. So we don't have to wait for complaints and stuff like that. If something's unsupported, make sure everyone knows it automatically. Uh, yeah, that was the question. Can we do it?
And you're, you're thinking of, you're thinking of like, if it's unsupported, it like wholesale gets removed from the marketplace or are you thinking that?
Um. No, I, I think at, at the start, we just notify the developer that we're marking it unsupported. We have stages of this. We don't do it all in one bug and go. Um, but to start off, we need some way of automatically marking things that have got unanswered support tickets as unsupported.
Well, the challenge with that is that not all the support goes through our systems anymore. So like, you'll see in the listing that you can either use our support tickets or you can point it to a URL. Uh, which we added, I don't know, years and years ago, because like we use Zendesk for all our support. So all of our add-ons just type into Zendesk and then we deal with you in Zendesk. Which at the time was definitely a political channel. I pushed back for a long time, but there were enough developers at the point, that point that were saying, look, I've got my own way of supporting stuff. So deal. So we did. And now what we do is we wait for complaints. So, and we occasionally get them. It's pretty rare, but we did just shut an add-on down. I don't know, was it two weeks ago, something like that? Where like, someone complained or there were, we were getting support, we were getting contact requests saying, look, I'm not getting any answers to my support threads on this. And um, you know, so we asked, our policy is we'll ask the developer, uh, hey, you need to answer these. And you know, I think we asked, I don't know, Mike, I think we asked two or three times and we didn't get any answer. So we said, look, we're shutting that down. And uh, we no longer sell that add-on. We issued refunds to anybody who wanted it. And amusingly, as soon as we did that, the uh, next request was, well, I didn't want that. I actually like it. I just wanted to do one more thing than it was. Can I still buy it? Uh, turn it back on. I just didn't like that it wasn't working in the one way I thought. And so no, the answer was no. Like if you can't have your cake and eat it too. Either you, you want it to be supported and uh, if it's not, we shut it off or it's not so bad and deal.
Um, I think what you're saying would, you know, alternate routes of support. If that, if someone's an alternate route of support, what would happen is that we won't catch as many unsupported as we would do otherwise. But there are lots of add-ons that are sitting around with unanswered support requests, which eventually bubble over into the forums, which eventually bubble up to you when people get sufficiently fed up with it. Now, if we just said, alert France, whenever someone posts that they haven't had a support request, I think you'd be inundated. I, I think there's a lot more of stuff that's unsupported, reflects badly on the community than you're aware of.
Well, it could be. I mean, I, I think that if um, if we want to shut any of those off, we're happy to do it. Um, I mean, the, we do it from time to time. The resources are here. They're happy to reach out and, and make that happen. It's not uncommon that when we do it, the immediate pushback is, well, no, 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 actually, we do want that add-on. We just had a question about it. We'd like to get an answer to.
Yeah, hence not automatically shutting them off, hence just putting a big red unsupported flag up, flag on them.
Sure.
Fire beware.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, I do think that we, I mean, we have that variable of how all, how fast our support requests, right?
True. Is that automated?
Automated? It used to be.
Oh God, I muted you Franz. Yeah, something about your wire angle. You, you went full uh, metal on metal there. I don't know if I have to unmute you or not. Um, yeah, so John, it sounds like uh, it sounds like we do have a feature in there. At least that's something I recall that we had the ability to say like, this was, this has been responded to on average, like in a week or something like that. So that, maybe there's opportunity to just check on that. Um, uh, and extend that a little bit. So I like the idea. It's a good idea.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, the next thing we have on the list is from A3020. He is wondering, we're gonna see if Franz can make it back into the speaking world. But A3020 is wondering about private messages. Um, and whether we have uh, thought about adding the ability to bulk delete personal private messages? Just to keep your own account safe from things like um, data breaches or anything like that. Yes. Dang it. Yeah, your, your mic is going, going crazy. You've got the mic trouble. My, I had it last uh, last month, so it's your turn. Um, yeah, so eighty three, A3020, um, that sounds good. It sounds like Franz is on board with that too. At least he didn't say no. So uh, he says yes. Um, yeah, so that's some, it sounds like that's something that we have on our list and something worth thinking about too. So um, definitely seems like a smart idea. Have the ability to delete private messages. The only question I have about it though is um, what would the other person see if you deleted your private messages? Did that, does their message go away too? Or does it just be like a deleted account or?
Uh, no, they're, everyone's got their own copy of a message. So I think uh, they, it would stick, that would, if you delete, just like email, just like email.
Cool. That makes sense. Uh, yeah, well, so that's the last thing on my list. Does anybody else want to uh? Uh, John the Fish just mentioned that it might be cool to be able to download bulk. But that seems like, that seems like you're kind of moving in the opposite direction of like enabling the data breach rather than uh, cleaning up for it. But you know, something to think about. I didn't see your, your, oh, I see you Raymond. Ramon, what is your question though? Okay. He, Ramon's wondering about training. Uh, do you always have to start at the bottom and work your way up like um, hierarchically? Like you gotta be bronze trained before you can get silver or will there be a fast track for some of the pros out there?
I think.
Franz's miming seems like he thinks something. Yeah, there we go. Perfect. Well, that's the, the last question I have. Stu Black is asking a question about um, the partner program. I think he's meaning to ask about the training program um, being live cast and just free to join. Um, yeah, I think that's the plan at this point is that it'll just be live cast. Franz is nodding. Um, it'll just be live cast. Anybody can join. Um, at least, at least until that becomes like, you know, super costly and we have to deal with that. But um, at first, definitely, definitely free and open. So. Well, that's the, the last of my list of questions. Uh, thanks everybody for joining us. Uh, we have a couple of minutes, so if anybody wants to try to slide one in, we can see if Franz wants to shout at us anymore.
I, I'll say something. This is Stu Black's Wayne. Um, I was gonna say just read the community. Just please put up some stuff. Um, go to the show intel channel and Slack. Um, just take a look at the, the redesign stuff just to um, let me?
No, that was Franz.
Uh, take a look at the Slack, take a look at Slack. Um, please leave any comments. You know, we all use concrete five dot O all the time. We use um, you know, pretty much everything along with it. If you see any issues that you're like, you know, this could be done better, put it up on that Slack channel. I'll add it to, um, if enough people restart commenting, what I'll do is I'll open up uh, the Google Doc and people can just edit it directly and put stuff there. Then I'll organize it correctly. Um, so at least I think it would be good to start a conversation that way. And then, you know, maybe it could get into, you know, further releases of concrete five dot O. But like I said, y'all are in the shop and y'all are completely busy. So I can understand trying to do redesign your own stuff is, is crazy sometimes.
If you want to throw a link into the um, town hall channel, I can go ahead and pin that for you.
Let me, I'll throw that right now. So here's.
I saw one last question that I thought would be cool to have Andy answer. Um, are there any big things upcoming in concrete five that you are excited about other than the API?
Sorry, we cut out a little bit. Could you say, ask that question?
Are there any big features coming into concrete five um, upcoming versions that you're excited about other than the API?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, let's see. Yeah, the API is a big one. Um, the new uh, some routing improvements to sort of make that API easier to deal with is definitely. You, those are things that are um, in active development in the develop branch. So you're gonna see those sooner. Um, beyond that, we have version nine, which is sort of a moving target a little bit. Um, it'll, it's sort of, it'll be done when it's done. And that's the main reason why we moved the API into version eight point five, because we needed it sooner. We want people playing with it sooner and we want to be able to take our time with version nine. Um, in version nine, let's see, what are some things that I'm uh, excited about? Um, we have multi-site, which we have built and use internally um, in an internal package uh, that we are going to be um, releasing to the public for, uh, as part of the open source version in version nine. That's a big thing that we're excited about. Um, it's no small undertaking, so it's gonna, it takes a little while to, to move from this package, but it is already written. So that's, that's awesome. Um, uh, there are some low level queuing and command improvements in version nine that are pretty different. And that's the reason why they're in version nine and not version eight point five, because there, there's gonna be some backward incompatibility. Um, but the, the end goal of this is to make it so that you can much more easily uh, offload certain commands and processes in concrete five to an external queue. So like an email uh, in, in a much simpler way. So concrete five kind of has the ability to queue up stuff and queue up jobs and things like that in the dashboard. And you know, if you have ever emptied the trash or re-scanned a bunch of files or something, you've seen that progress bar. But that's a little different than kind of queuing at a lower level. So we, in version nine, we actually have the ability to define commands and command handlers. And make it so that you can run sort of queuing engines, engines like uh, Iron MQ or what have you. And offload commands to those through configuration to speed up your site and to, to do all, all sorts of uh, fancy stuff. So that, that's another thing I'm really excited about. And on the total opposite direction and something we have not given any development time to, but something I, I firmly believe should be done. Um, there's a, there's a long thread in GitHub about some improvements to the layout engine in terms of um, uh, custom layouts, grid layouts. Basically, in concrete five today, you can at the theme level define some area layout presets. And these are, what's cool about these that you can't get when you do it through the UI is you get the ability to kind of make these columns with all sorts of different responsive breakpoints. And kind of uh, make them much more complex than you can do through the tools that work in the actual app itself. And uh, there's a long thread in there about moving that uh, ability to create those layouts out from the theme class file, which is just PHP and you have to write PHP and to um, actually deploy updates to your packages to get these new layouts. And turn it into something that you can actually define in the dashboard and uh, and see in the stack tool, uh, in the stack panel. Kind of um, like we have other things today. And uh, that I think is, is gonna be really cool in a much sort of, it's the polar opposite type of change as the, as the kind of low level queuing and API updates. It's something that uh, site, site editors will see and uh, and developers and theme developers will be able to. And uh, theme developers won't have to anticipate all the different fancy layout needs that a site uh, editor will need. They'll be able to define those complex layouts um, through the dashboard. So again, that's something that the community raised. I think it's a really good idea. Um, there's a long GitHub issue for it, including some mockups as to how it might look. And uh, I'm hoping that will make its way into nine point O in its due course. So those are the things that I am, I'm excited about.
Sounds like a lot of cool stuff coming down the pike. Um, cool. Well, thanks everybody. Uh, this has been the uh, second town hall. Our third one will be January eighth, same time, same place. Might be a different place if we can get recording in, in, in uh, time. So keep an eye out on the blog post for a new link other than meat to, to use for next time. But um, that'll definitely be on the eighth. Uh, so thanks everybody for joining us.
Thank you.
Oh God, it's so loud.
All right. Thanks again, everybody. I think as soon as one of us leaves, everybody will leave. So. Find out who's, who's the host.